Good evening, everybody. Welcome to tonight's council meeting, September ninth. Roll call, please.
Brewster?
Here.
Walters?
Here.
Gordon?
Here.
Ewer?
Here.
Bennett?
Here.
Harton?
Here.
Crum?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
Tonight's supplication will be given by Pastor Kurt Hinson from Hayesville Christian Church.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's pray. Gracious heavenly Father, we just come to you tonight, and I'm reminded of the words of a song I used to sing with my grandmother growing up. Who made the mountains? Who made the seas? Who made the river to flow to the seas and who hung the moon in the starry sky? Well, it was somebody bigger than you and I. So we thank you tonight that as we gather here, that we serve such an awesome God. A God that we can put our hope in, our trust in, our faith in, our lives in. Father, your word reminds us that we seek you first, your kingdom, your righteousness, everything else then is added unto us. And if we commit our plans unto you, that you will establish them. So we thank you for your word. I just invite you now to come right here into this chamber. We thank you that you were first on the agenda tonight. Would you fill each heart with your peace, with your hope, with your love? Just even now, we just pause for a moment to give you thanks for every breath for this beautiful day. For the opportunity we have in this community to love and to grow and to serve together in Christ's name. Amen.
Please join me in pledging allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have the presentation and approval of minutes, minutes of August twelfth, twenty twenty-four. And there is a corrected copy on your bench. Councilman Crum?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from August twelfth, twenty twenty-four, as presented at our seats.
Second.
We have motion of second to approve the minutes of August twelfth, twenty twenty-four, as presented on the bench. Need discussion? Question, please.
Brewster?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
All right, next we have item one, citizens to be heard. We have Diana Bruffett. If you'd like to come to the podium and state your name and address, and you have five minutes to speak.
Hi, my name is Diana Bruffett. I live at ninety-five ten South Stearns, Hayesville, Kansas, six seven oh six oh. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for the opportunity to address an issue that strikes at the heart of our principles of fairness and democratic representation. I stand before you to discuss a situation that resonates deeply with the core values of our nation, taxation without representation. I currently reside in the county, and like many others, I'm subject to a peculiar troubling scenario. Despite living outside the city limits of Hayesville, I am required to pay City Hayesville taxes on items delivered to my address. Yet paradoxically, I'm denied fundamental right to vote in Hayesville elections. In my case, the issue is not just theoretical, it is a tangible, everyday reality. I have reached out to various officials, including Will Black, and have been directed to contact authorities in Topeka. While I'm grateful for the guidance, it should not be the responsibility of individuals to navigate bureaucratic hurdles to address such inequity. The burden of ensuring fair and just taxation should not fall upon the shoulders of those who are already disadvantaged by the lack of representation. To address the issue, we must advocate a system where those who are taxed have a say in decisions that impact them. We must ensure that every taxpayer has access to representation that reflects the interests and concerns. This is not just a local governance, it is about upholding the democratic values that define our democracy. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So there are different ways, a couple of different ways that people can recoup the money if they paid it in sales tax if they do not live in the city of Hayesville. First is to go to the vendor, this is coming from the state, state guidance. First is to go to the vendor, try and collect the money that was paid in sales tax, and then if that doesn't work, then you go to the state of revenue office to recuperate money. Because they should not be applying sales tax to people that do not live in the city, within the city. So thank you for bringing that up, Councilman Crum.
So what are some of the businesses just charging because of the mailing address?
Probably a zip code.
Yeah, I assume.
Okay.
Because when you go and look at a serial or a zip code on the website, on the zip code website, it gives you several different options. And if you don't know for sure which option to choose, then you could choose the one that's got the sales, the extra one percent sales tax. I know this because I work for Ferguson, and I have to go in and set up accounts with sales tax on or not. So it's in setting it up that they choose the one that gives them one percent extra sales tax.
Does that also mean the other side, some of the Hayesville residents that have Wichita mailing addresses when they go in and put their zip code? Are we missing out on that sales tax and Wichita picking it up?
It's possible.
It's hard to tell because we don't know where the tax money is coming from. We get it from the state.
All we get is a total lump sum.
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
All right, next we have item two, approval of license and bonds. We have none. Item three, introduction of ordinances and resolutions, none. Item four, notices and communications, a governing body announcements.
I'm not ready.
Councilman? Councilman Crum?
I thought my eye is going to be here in just a second. Here we go. At the library, if it loads. In September, starting tomorrow, there'll be a genealogy group at two o'clock. Also tomorrow at six o'clock, County Commissioner Lopez, Community Advisory Group will be meeting on the twelfth at ten thirty. Parents' Teacher Storytime, and that's a weekly event. Then on the fourteenth at noon, the Friends of the Library will be having a potluck. On the seventeenth, they're also having a Constitution Day event, I believe. The next Lego Club meeting is September eighteenth. September nineteenth is another Parents' Teacher Storytime. The twenty-first, there'll be a gathering at the gazebo and art walk, that's at four thirty. Then on the twenty-second through the twenty-eighth, they're having Band Book Week. It's called Freed Between the Lines is the theme of it. And then on the twenty-sixth, there's a bunch of activities going on. That's the next teacher, Parents' and Teacher Storytime. It's also Friends of the Library Board Meeting and a Library Board Meeting regular. And then the quilters always meet in the community room on Mondays and Thursday mornings, and knitting and crochet group meets on Tuesday afternoons. And that's what's going on in the library.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other council members have announcements? So a few things going on at the Senior Center, some upcoming events, Empowering Seniors Series, that's on September twelfth. Food is Medicine, September thirteenth. Medicare reservations begin September sixteenth. Vaccine Clinic, September seventeenth. Chili Dinner, September twentieth. Exploration Place Drone Show, September twenty-second. Puzzle Tournament, September twenty-third. Final Friday with Felix and Old Chicago Outing, September twenty-seventh. Ice Cream Social, September thirtieth. Some recurring events, there's donuts, coffee and conversation, Domino's, cards, writing craft, bingo, bunko, charity yoga, WSU Well Rep, Alhambra Support Group, Crafting Club, Shuff the Box Game. I've never played that. And see, some of the hustle numbers for August of this year, number of riders, two hundred and fifty, compared to last year, two twenty-two. And new registered riders, three, and three last year as well. All right, we also have in your packet, the Central County Department Station Thirty-four Monthly Report. And we also have a nice email from Kay Alfordton regarding North Main and Sixty-third Street sidewalk project. All right, item five, old business, we have none. Item six, other business, a consideration of agreement with Central County regarding Arc Ninety-five. Will?
There's a memo in your packet, and if you had a chance to read that, it talks about the Arc Ninety-five project being basically the first step in a larger south area transportation study plan, which includes eventually a parkway system that includes a north-south section on Meridian. That would be the most beneficial, apparently the most beneficial to Hayesville, but this Arc Ninety-five project is basically the first step in this larger transportation plan. There should be a parkway system for the south side of the county. And tonight with us is Lynn Packer. He is with Central County. He's the Director of Public Works, also the county engineer. And I'd like to give him a chance to talk about the project a little bit and what this agreement does and what the county is going to do.
Welcome, Lynn.
Good morning, or good afternoon, good evening. I am used to morning council meetings. Thank you, Will. As Will stated, I'm here to answer any questions you may have and also just talk about Arc Ninety-five in general. Many of you may have heard of Arc Ninety-five. Arc Ninety-five is an acronym for Arkansas River Crossing, Ninety-Fifth Street South. It is basically in its grand plan to be a revitalized parkway all the way from Woodline to the east, going all the way to Broadway on the west. The segment that we are concentrating on right now is what we call Phase One, which is basically the crossing over the Ark River, BNSF and K fifteen, that will take it over to Hillside, I believe, is where it's going for the first phase to get us through there. That's where we have it paved to right now. And then we have three phases total that would get it all the way out to Broadway. Eventually, the whole stretch, the whole south stretch is actually all the way to One Hundred and Nineteenth Street West toward Clearwater. That's, as you can imagine, a project of such size is going to take many years to complete. So we are just at the pre-engineering level right now. The funding we are seeking in collaboration with regional cities is to basically start the environmental process as well as get some funding off the ground to create a protective overlay for that area around Ninety-Fifth Streets that would allow for notification and first offers from the county to acquire a right of way as needed that's been identified through that corridor. The benefit we have in this project that's a little bit different than you may have heard, like with the Northeast Expressway or the Northwest Expressway or the what's been referred to as Northwest Bypass, is this is not a freeway style. It is not new going through bare land. It's actually just a widening of existing Ninety-Fifth Street corridor. So most of the right of way is just additional right of way along the existing corridor. And that's what everything is being set up for right now, to set that corridor protective overlay up as well as get funds together to continue pre-engineering levels and environmental studies to get this to the point of getting to construction. Are there any questions?
Councilman Crum?
You say the first three phases, the furthest west, you're going to go Broadway, roughly?
Yes, for the first, yes.
How many, I know you said years, and actually you did go all the way west, all the way to One Hundred and Nineteenth Street. We were looking at our stuff, thinking our biggest get out of it would be Meridian. So how would the Meridian be in the next, in the fourth phase or the fifth phase, or have you guys got that far?
We have not gone that far, but I would imagine there would only be probably one other phase. Again, mostly a, on Ninety-Fifth Street, starting on One Hundred and Nineteenth, we've already started paving actually from really One Hundred and Thirty-Fifth, kind of going eastward, so it's kind of coming together, if you will. So that, and while we're doing that work, we're taking, since we understand that's the grand plan for Ninety-Fifth Street, what we are making those improvements out further west and coming toward the east, we're taking that in consideration. One of the first things we did out there was reconstruct a bridge near Ninety-Fifth Street South and Broadway, and that bridge was actually widened for the final build-out. It's not being used for that full width right now, but it's already been built out as if we were going to have three, five lanes out there.
Would this help fund the whole thing in general? What I'm concerned about is I'm concerned about the bridge on Meridian that goes up, it's already there, the four-lane bridge on Meridian that goes over. I know they just did some work on it a few years ago. I think they probably should have knocked it down and built it all from scratch then. But will that bridge come into any, be impacted by this in any way? Will they look at that as part of that, part of that south corridor? Will they look at redoing that, or do you know?
I cannot speak to that this early. I know that it's going to be some time before we get out to the construction portion of looking that far out. And when we do that, everything will, you know, everything changes over time. Back in twenty sixteen and seventeen, when we were originally doing this study, as much as I would love to say that we have that crystal ball that tells us exactly where we're going with everything and what it's going to look like, you know, twenty years in the future, it's a very muddy crystal ball. And so I'm not going to rule anything out, but at the same time, Arc Ninety-five really is concentrating on the Ninety-Fifth Street corridor and those major intersections along that corridor.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Lynn?
I think the only thing I would add is that the agreement we're seeking today is a five-year agreement. That is something we have done with other similar situations. And it does allow for obviously either or both entities to exit at an earlier date. But it does allow for, we are looking for, with all our partner cities, for a five-year commitment. That allows us to plan as we move forward. Everything we're doing right now with Arc Ninety-five is nothing that's happening in the very next year. It is all coming down years and years down the road. So it just allows us to plan a little bit better when we have five-year increments.
Anybody like to make a motion for approval? Councilman Crum?
I make a motion that we approve the consideration of agreement with Sedgwick County regarding the Arc Ninety-five as presented.
We have motion of second to approve the agreement with Central County regarding the Arc Ninety-five project. Any discussion? Question, please.
Brewster?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
All right, next we have item B, Revenue Neutral Rate Public Hearing. A Resolution of the City of Hayesville, Kansas to levy a property tax exceeding the revenue neutral rate. So I will be reading from a public hearing script. So I now formally open the Revenue Neutral Rate Public Hearing on the proposed twenty twenty-five budget. Do any members of the audience wish to speak for or against the bill rate? The Revenue Neutral Rate is twenty, I'm sorry, thirty-eight point five six five. Proposed bill rate is forty point four five one. All right, seeing no one coming forward, if there are no members of the audience wishing to speak on this topic, I will now formally close the Revenue Neutral Rate Public Hearing for the proposed twenty twenty-five budget. Council discussion. So is there any discussion from council? All right. Councilman Crum?
Nope, I got ahead of you.
No, that's all right. I would entertain a motion on the Revenue Neutral Rate Resolution that is in the council packet. Councilman Crum?
I move to exceed the Revenue Neutral Rate and adopt a resolution of the City of Hayesville, Kansas to levy a property tax rate exceeding the Revenue Neutral Rate.
Second.
All right, we have a motion of second to approve a resolution of the City of Hazel, Kansas to levy a property tax rate exceeding the Revenue Neutral Rate as presented. Any discussion? Question, please.
Brewster?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
All right, next brings us to the Budget Public Hearing. A Consideration of the Proposed Twenty Twenty-five Budget. I have a script for this as well. I now formally open the public hearing on the proposed twenty twenty-five budget. Do any members of the audience wish to speak for or against the proposed budget? Seeing none, we'll move on. Verne, no members of the audience wishing to speak on the budget, I now formally close the public hearing for the proposed twenty twenty-five budget. Any discussion from council? If not, I would entertain a motion to adopt the Twenty Twenty-five Proposed Budget. Councilman Crum?
I make a motion that we adopt the Twenty Twenty-five Proposed Budget as presented.
Second.
We have motion of second to adopt the budget as presented. Any discussion? Question, please.
Brewster?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
All right, next we have item D, Consideration of Wood Chips for Playgrounds. Tony?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. At the August Park Board Meeting, the committee approved up to seventy-five thousand to purchase wood fiber for playgrounds throughout the parks. I did receive two bids back. I am requesting authorization to spend sixty-six thousand five hundred and ninety dollars to Cunningham Recreation. This will take about two to six weeks to complete. Can I answer any questions you might have?
Council, have any questions? Would somebody like to make a motion, Councilperson Parker?
I make motion we authorize the sixty-six thousand five hundred and ninety dollars to Cunningham Recreation for the engineered wood fiber.
Second.
We have motion of second to approve the wood chips for the playgrounds as presented. Any discussion? Question, please.
Brewster?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, next we have item E, Consideration of Crack Ceiling.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As part of our annual street maintenance program that was presented to you in the council meeting in April, tonight we are seeking approval for this year's crack ceiling project. Crack ceiling is essential to prevent water infiltrating underneath the pavement, which can cause significant damage. We did advertise bids to several contractors with two bidders declining and another declining because of the size of the project and the budget. The original budget estimate was a hundred, just over a hundred and three thousand. We are seeking approval to contract with South Central Ceiling LLC in the amount of ninety-three thousand fifty-two dollars, and this will be paid with straight, street sales tax funds.
Councilman Crum?
Tony, this is, and I don't know if we've ever thought about doing anything like this before. We have these different companies that come in and give bids. And I guess I would assume we have, some of these companies show better work than others, so they'll work better with best work. Have we ever thought about going in and kind of doing a rating system on these so that if we end up getting one bid, we know if it's somebody that hasn't done a great job for us in the past, or?
I may kind of refer to Josh a little bit. I know in the past, we've had conversations about the work of certain contractors and it's been, I guess, not advised to not advertise to contractors because of workmanship, I guess.
Well, I'm not saying they're asking to put a bid in. Sometimes though, it'd be good to know that if we have a bid that's maybe, you know, a couple of thousand more than the other one, but the other one's always done great work and the other one we've had some questions about. I mean, I know you have to have an excuse to take a little bit higher bid, but maybe something to think about because, I mean, I don't know if we've had any trouble with South Central. That's not what I'm saying. I'm just saying if we've started having a lot more things go out that we're not, we're getting, people aren't putting the bids in, we aren't getting as many bids.
And I would say just on the, it'd be my opinion that if there was a contractor that was potentially do better work and that would cost more, it'd be my job to communicate to you guys the reasoning behind why maybe I'd recommend maybe the second highest bid or the second lowest bid. That's something like, you know, Will and I and the mayor, we discuss, a company A is the low bid. Maybe they're not perfect, but are they worth the low bid, if that makes sense?
Okay. That was all. I would make a motion to approve the, the, the consideration of the crack ceiling bids from South Central Ceiling LLC in a total of ninety-three thousand fifty-two dollars.
Second.
We have motion of second. Any discussion? Councilman Harton?
Tony, I got a question. When did we do Sunset Fields over there? Two years ago, three years ago?
Twenty eighteen?
Eighteen?
Maybe, give or take.
Okay, so I'm just kind of curious as why we're steel cracking in there. And we have places like in Old Oaks, several streets in there that are not on the list that are in desperate need of steel cracks, so.
So a lot of the decision-making process with So, a lot of the decision-making process with crack ceiling is protecting our investment. We have, I think, forget what Sunset Fields' cost was, but crack ceiling is the first step in street maintenance. So really, what we're trying to do is protect our dollars there. I would a hundred percent agree with you, there's many other streets in town that need some form of street maintenance, but, you know, we're doing about six hundred thousand of street maintenance a year. It's not a great answer you probably went to here, but I guess in my point of view, if we're gonna spend a million dollars on a street development project, crack ceiling is something you need to do within two to four years to protect that.
Oh, I agree. I mean, I don't, I don't have an issue with the crack ceiling. I mean, that's a definite thing that needs to be done, but there's, like I said, in Old Oaks over there, there's quite a few streets over there that's twenty-five years old that have cracks and stuff, and I don't see no... Just a, just a question.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, question, please.
Brewster?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
All right, next we have item F, consideration of traffic signal cameras at Main Street and Grand Avenue.
We've obtained quotes to upgrade the existing camera-based traffic detection system at the intersection of Main and Grand. The current system has reached the end of its lifecycle and continues to have malfunctioning problems quite regularly. We are requesting authorization to order the new vehicle detection camera system from Gady Sales for a total of sixteen thousand seven hundred ninety, with installation by Phillips Southern Electric at six thousand nine hundred ninety-five, which brings the total of twenty-three thousand seven hundred eighty-five dollars. This is a budgeted, budgeted item and will be paid from Street Capital Outlay Fund.
Counsel, have any questions? Councilman Bennett?
I make a motion we approve the consideration of traffic signal cameras.
We have motion on second to approve the, this consideration of traffic signal cameras as presented. Any discussion? Question, please.
Brewster?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
All right, next we have item G, consideration of water meter purchase.
We also obtained quotes to purchase water meters and radios, which will be used to replenish our stock and to install in new residential and commercial construction. These meters are proprietary to the software employed by the city. Therefore, we are requesting authorization to purchase the water meters and radios from Core and Main for a total of twenty-two thousand six hundred nineteen dollars and forty cents. This will be paid out of Water Materials Fund.
Councilman Bennett?
Tony, how many meters does that get us?
Sixty.
Sixty.
Any other questions? Councilperson Pardon?
I just will make a motion to purchase, to purchase the water meters and water funding radios for twenty-two thousand six hundred nineteen dollars and forty cents.
Second.
We have motion on second to purchase the water meters as presented. Any discussion? Question, please.
Brewster?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, next we have item H, consideration of replacement diving boards.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. From a recent inspection of the Dewey Gunsabund Swimming Pool, the diving boards are needing to be replaced. Earlier this summer, the low diving board snapped, so we shut down the high dive and removed it, moved it over to the low dive. One week later, that diving board decided to break. So then, after removing both boards completely, we found that both the one-meter and three-meter diving stands or diving towers are needed to be replaced as well. We'd like to complete this project this fall prior to the pool opening next season. I recommend purchasing the one-meter and three-meter diving towers and two diving boards from PoolWeb. This is for the purchase of the diving boards and towers only, as delivery will take multiple months for those, for these items to get here. I am in the process of getting quotes for installation, so from PoolWeb, purchasing from PoolWeb for thirty-five thousand three hundred ninety-seven dollars and sixty-six cents, and this will be paid out of rec. sales tax.
Any question for Rob? Councilman Crum?
I noticed the low diving board has a fulcrum like I've never seen before. Those fulcrums have the wheel, and you can move it, and this looks like it has like a handle thing? Do we know what that's like, because I've never seen one of those before?
Yeah, instead of, if, instead of cranking to, to turn it, it's one that will, like, slide out, and then you're able to move it, and it has set, set spots.
Do you know whether they'll be able to move it if they're on the board, or they have to move it before they're on?
They have to move it when they're off. Is my guess.
You gotta see if they've got one with the, with the style wheel. Just from, because most kids now, even in competitive, they adjust the wheel with their foot while they're on the board, so...
So is that something you want?
I'm not gonna say don't do it if they don't have that, because I don't know, maybe that system might be fine, it's just, I've never seen it before. So I don't want, I don't want to hold up. If we need to get them ordered, let's get them ordered. I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve the diving tower and board orders as presented from PoolWeb for thirty-five thousand three hundred ninety-seven dollars and sixty-six cents.
Second.
We have motion on second to approve the diving tower and board as presented. Boards? Any discussion? Question, please.
Brewster?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Next we have item I, consideration of personnel manual changes.
Attached in your packet are some changes to the personnel manual to restructure the city clerk's department. We're being, adding a human resources generalist. That would be, instead of rehiring a assistant city clerk, and then promoting the utility billing specialist and accounting specialist to supervisory roles. Any questions?
Councilman Crum?
Do some of these fall in line with the recommendations we had with the way we did the, we changed some of the names of the jobs listings when we did, redid the pay scale? Do these kind of slide into that?
Yes, we compared the, some of them, because we added the supervisory roles, we did adjust, if you'll see in the packet, where we kind of adjusted where they were based on other supervisory positions, education that was required, and the job duty responsibilities.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we had used that when we did these.
Okay.
Any other questions for Angie? Councilman Bennett?
I make a motion that we approve the personnel manual changes.
Second.
We have motion on second to approve the personnel manual changes. Any discussion? Question, please.
Brewster?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
All right, that takes us to item seven, Department of Reports, A, administrative services. Georgie?
American Legion Cruise and Car Show is this Saturday at the Vickers Building from nine to three P.M. On Sunday, Wichita Ballet will perform Once Upon a Time in Rigs Park at six P.M. This is a free event to the public and is sponsored by Hayesville Park Board. Lastly, Gathering at the Gazeebo and Art Walk is coming up on Saturday, September twenty-first, from four-thirty to eight-thirty in the Historic District. We will have music by the Mudbugs, art, food, vendors, art raffle, kids' chalk art, and wine tasting. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Next we have city clerk. Angie?
City offices will be closed on October fourteenth. You can call the five-two-nine-five-nine-one-two if there's any water or sewer emergencies. That is the second Monday, so we will be having council meeting on October fifteenth, Tuesday. And also on Tuesday, October fifteenth, it is the last day to register to vote or update your information if you've moved since the last time you voted.
All right, thank you. Next we have item C, please. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just wanted to remind everybody, our visiting officer tonight is Captain Longo. Everybody's probably met Captain Longo, he's been around for a while. So, he is our visiting officer this evening, so say hi to him as you go out out there. And also, I wanted to remind everybody also that September is preparedness month, so work with your families, even though fire prevention month isn't until next month, work with your families on what you do, if there's an emergency, reunification points, things like that, if you have to evacuate your house or go somewhere, just have those conversations with your family. When something's going on, it's too late to have that stuff. So make sure that you have a plan, ideas on where you're gonna go, what you're gonna do in case there's an emergency or something happens. It doesn't necessarily have to be a, a fire, but tornadoes, natural disasters, which we're kind of prone to around here, floods, all that kind of stuff, just have that conversation with your family at dinner. Come up with a plan. Thank you.
Councilman Crum?
Chief, I just wanted to thank you and ask you to share the, with your officers, I appreciate the attention they've been paying to the school zones here at the beginning of the year. I know they've been doing a great job down there, and I assume they're doing the same thing down by Rex and HMS, and notice the difference right off that. Hopefully, we can keep that up over here.
Thank you. I'll pass that on to them.
Give them their appreciation. Thank you.
Be happy to hear that. Thanks.
All right, next we have D, Public Works. Tony?
I have nothing.
Item E, Recreation. Rob?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Youth basketball registration begins today. We have our stall spots available for paint tonight on September thirteenth. The Fall Festival Car Show registration will begin on October first. And then, both councils know that the Hayesville Activity Center is now a Silver Sneakers and Renew Active facility, so if members are over the age of sixty-five, and you, you have Silver Sneakers through your insurance, or Renew Active through, you know, your healthcare, you get free membership to the activity center. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Rob. All right, next we have item eight, appointments. A, appointment of Diamond Paint to library board for a four-year term. Councilman Crum?
I make a motion that we approve the appointment of Diamond Paint to the library board for a four-year term.
Second.
We have motion on second to appoint Diamond Paint to the library board for a four-year term. Any discussion? Question, please.
Brewster?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
All right, next we have item nine, executive session. A, executive session to discuss personnel matters related to non-elected personnel, not to exceed twenty minutes. Councilman Rorden?
May I make a motion we go into executive session with Council, the mayor, Chief Whitfield, and Will, and the city attorney, to not exceed twenty minutes?
Second.
We have motion on second to...
We saved the time that we're gonna come back in motion?
Seven fifty-two.
Seven fifty-two?
That's what I got.
Is that fifteen minutes? Is that fifteen minutes?
Twenty minutes.
Forty minutes.
Do you want to do twenty minutes?
Fifty-nine.
That's what we're...
Yeah, twenty minutes.
Seven fifty-nine.
Seven fifty-nine.
Fifty-nine, okay. I'll do a few minutes, I'll...
All right, so we have motion to, to go into executive session to discuss personnel matters to related non-elected personnel, not to exceed twenty minutes, return here in the council chambers at seven fifty-nine. Was there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Question, please.
Brewster?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
All right, we're back from executive session where no binding action was taken. We'll move on to item ten, review of expenditures. A, summary of August expenditures. Councilperson?
Move to receive and file the August expenditures.
Second.
The motion is second to receive and file the August expenditures. Any discussion? Question, please.
Brewster?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
All right, next we have item eleven, consent agenda. A, temporary, sorry, consent agenda. We have one item on the consent agenda. Would be like to approve the consent agenda. Councilman Thompson?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
The motion is second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Question, please.
Brewster?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
All right, next item twelve, council items. A, council concerns. Are there any concerns from council? None? All right. Moving along. Item B, council action request updates. Tony.
So update for sixty-eight ninety-five South Broadway. Notice of violation was mailed to them on August twenty-eighth. By city code, they have until October twenty-eighth to come into compliance, otherwise we'll abate that. Seventy thirty-one South Broadway, the property owner had moved voluntarily. Case is considered closed.
All right, thank you. Next we have item thirteen, adjournment.
May I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
The motion is second for adjournment, ladies leading. Any discussion? Question, please.
Brewster?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.